So you showed me something before, that's what's so strange.
I know it, but that's when I made the August and have another one.
So you're quite, you know, just ignoring.
No, 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 because I know how you know I did not even know. My message is like this.
Well, who's getting my messages? If that is somebody saying my name.
I heard him. Yeah, this is good. He said it wasn't his voice. Did you hear that? It's there. His name. I got my head. Wow, wow. I've got a nice husband. I'm a wife's lady. Hey, you don't know what's happening. Tell you that. Oh, this is big. Brian, he told me this one in the office. I'm going to go. I haven't seen the one walking that way. This is there. Still, she'll handle it. I'll see her back and get it. Right around. Why is it following around? My wife. She's by your page. But we have not gone. Apparently, you didn't find it.
Who's sitting here, say? Janine Blumberg, the new.
Oh, no. It's right here. Oh, okay. I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good chance for both of us to get a better acquaintance with her.
Yeah. She's got basic cross.
So the board is out of the making before animal rights.
And here she is.
Oh, yeah, we just got her. I didn't know what was going on.
This is my first. But he's been a factor in education. Lowly many years now. Very active.
I've been following this man here for years.
We are. Yes, 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 yes. You don't need to comment about that. No, no, that's, that's, that's. This is the public hearing. I have instant credibility between the two of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the very brief meeting of the Board of Governors. With that, may I ask each do a roll call, please?
Ms. McDavid here. Ms. Blumberg here. Dr. Chase.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Dastard is not here. Ms. Duncan, she's present in the building. She's here. Mr. Edwards.
Present.
Dr. Marshall.
Here.
Has Frank Martin come into the room? No. Ms. Pappas, are you on the line? Ms. Parker.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Stavros, he's here.
Yes.
Here.
And Dr. Zachariah was going to try and have a forum.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to, our only, our only point on the agenda today is approval of the presidential selection criteria for Florida Gulf Coast University.
Madam Chair, I failed to call. Mr. Hart from the Florida Gulf Coast University Board of Trustees is also on the line. Mr. Hart?
Good morning.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Hello, Larry. Welcome.
Thank you.
We are dealing with the one item. Before we have the vote, do you have any comments for us?
I would just like to inform you that we are doing the very best that we can to move this process along with very little delay, but much input from everyone as well as the university, as well as the community. And again, thank you guys for your support.
Thank you so much, Larry. I've never seen a board work so well for the best interest of a university, and I'm very, more than pleased with the way that you've worked with the Board of Governors and your leadership and your chairman's leadership. Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion to approve the criteria? Charlie Edwards is the second. Vice Chairman McDavid, is, are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
On behalf of FDCU, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Motion carries. We are concluding the meeting of the Board of Governors and moving into the public hearing. Is that correct? Is there a comment? Who was that? Was there someone? I don't know. Do we wait? Is it 10? It's not quite 10 o'clock.
Good morning.
It will wait just one minute. They were just waiting for us to prove this is a girl. That's why we had to do it now instead of now. They're all positive. They're negative. They're the first one. Florida goes back to the first one. It's at 7:09. Thank all of you for being here today for our first public hearing on our forward by design. I want to thank President Hitt and his Board of Trustees. His chairman is here today for their gracious hospitality. As I said, when you treat us this well, we keep coming back. It's hard to get rid of us, but thank you very much, President Hitt, and thank you, Chairman Walsh. Today, we are beginning something new for our board. As the Board of Governors, this will be our first public hearing on our intent to have long-range planning for higher education in the state of Florida. In just a minute, I'll ask the Chancellor to talk about our project, Forward by Design, where we have asked a consultant to help us think about the future structure of our state university system and how we fit into higher education for the state of Florida. The report we'll be referencing today is the Pappas Consulting Group report. Dr. Pappas is here today to speak to you. For the record, I want to be very clear. This is not, the Pappas report is separate from the Board of Governors' plan. This is beginning of a conversation, and while we recognize the time and respect so much report, it's not the Board of Governors' report. Through, when we complete this process, we will then have a Board of Governors' plan for the next 30 years for the state university system for Florida. As part of our process, the board agreed to hold public hearings around the state and to hear from you, members of the public, interested parties. We hope we'll hear from representatives from most of the groups that are affected by long-range planning. We want to hear your thoughts, your recommendations, and let you know that we will be making notes. The board will be asking questions, but we don't expect any debate, and we'll take certainly into consideration all your thoughts. Some of the ground rules for the hearing, as I said, we'll be listening and the board will be asking questions. We're going to ask you to hold your comments, other than elected officials, they can talk as long as they want to. They can, we'll sit right here and listen. But to five minutes, and we're not going to ring a bell or be rude, but you will see that we have a stoplight here. So you will see when it's one minute, it will go to yellow, and we don't want you to stop in the middle of a sentence, but we hope you'll be respectful of everyone's time. We'd like your comments to be as clear and concise as possible, because we all are making notes and learning from what you say. I want to remind you that there is a website. The Chancellor has a website for this project where you may email or blog. You would, us your comments on the Forward by Design project. It is forwardbydesign@flbog.org. You can respond to the web-based survey at the Board of Governors' website, www.flbog.org. The blog is accessible at the same website. We want to be very respectful of the public in this. This is for all of us that give our time on this board. We believe the university system is the most important, the most valuable treasure in the state. I believe that it's impossible to have a great state without a great university system and a great higher education system. Now, when we're talking about higher education, we recognize the importance of the private institutions. So this is, we are doing long-range planning for the state that includes all access for our citizens. Before we begin our public testimony, I'd like to ask the Chancellor and take a moment to welcome our Commissioner of Education, Joanne Blumberg. Welcome. You're going to love it, and we're going to love you. And of course, our new member, Gus Stavros, he's a great citizen of this state, and his, the history of what he's done for more than one university all goes without saying. We thank you for being a great citizen and for agreeing to serve on this board. Both of you, welcome. And I will volunteer our Chancellor and staff to be available to you at any time. So thank you very much, and congratulations. Chancellor?
Madam Chair, thank you very much, members of the board, and particularly new members of the board. Indeed, Madam Chair, we've already had a briefing with Commissioner Blumberg, and we've also already met with our new member as well, Gus Stavros, and I want to thank you for joining us. We are on a multifaceted task. It's largely good news. We have a lot to do, so thank you very much for being with us. We're delighted that so many of you could be here this morning to begin this lengthy, prolonged, and perhaps detailed discussion about what our state university system could and should look like in the next 30 years. As many of you know, since the Board of Governors has been in existence, it has set forth a broader strategic plan, working with the universities in a collaborative fashion, our 11 universities, in setting goals and objectives for baccalaureate, masters, and doctoral degree production through a strategic plan that was approved by the board several years ago. We realize, however, that without a more detailed discussion about how we will deliver those degree programs, that we are likely not to achieve our modest goals. And in the process of not achieving our modest goals, we worry, because as the major provider of baccalaureate education for the citizens of state of Florida, in a context of rapid population growth and the many challenges that are brought forth by virtue of globalization, we will not have served our citizens well. And so therefore, with the support of the Board of Governors and commission through the Board of Governors' Foundation, we ask the Pappas Consulting Group to begin the process of a discussion and action that could lead to a system of higher education that would be responsive to the changing needs of Floridians. Hence, we are here today. We expect to have at least four to five more public hearings between now and June. We have already initiated a discussion with legislative leadership and with our governor's office. We expect that in June, following this prolonged conversation, we will begin to chart a course that will allow for us to be more responsive, working in a collaborative fashion, to the citizens of the state in their quest for higher education. And we bear in mind that our commitment as a board is to quality, a quality education, even while we are expanding access, because we recognize that if our students don't graduate with a quality education, that they will not be in a position to help our state improve its well-being and its quality of life for the citizens of the state of Florida. And that's a very important public trust that we take very, very seriously. This morning will be, and this afternoon will be, the first part of an adventure that we are very optimistic about, largely because the story that we have to tell is very good for the citizens of the state of Florida. We just want to do better, and that's what we're about today. So without further preamble, I will ask Alses Pappas, who is the president of the Pappas Consulting Group, to give us a brief summary of the report that you have available to you, as Madam Chair pointed out, on our website, and that you have had available to you to already make comments on. And I can see probably that many of you have already made comments on our blog, and I want to thank you for that. As a matter of fact, we've had an onslaught of comments over the last several weeks. We're now up to over 300 comments. So it's a very positive step in terms of getting community input, and we'll be looking at every one of those comments. Dr. Pappas?
Thank you, Chancellor. This morning, what I wanted to do is just to provide you a brief overview of the report, to talk a little bit about what the report was charged to do, and some of the initial observations and recommendations that are in that report, and then also take you through the key elements of the blueprint, just again to, in essence, refresh our minds about the context of that report. Fundamentally, we were charged by the Board of Governors' Foundation to take a fresh look at the state of higher education in Florida. That included the community colleges and then the independent colleges and universities of the state. And interestingly for us, the report was to be written with our perspective only, based on data, documentation that was provided to us, and we were not to be influenced by stakeholders or to write a report that would be perceived as being politically correct. We were to write a report that was candid and that put all the facts on the table and came to conclusion about how to take, as the Chancellor just said, what is a good set of individual institutions and to provide an integrated strategic perspective over the next 30 years for higher education in the state of Florida. When we issued the report, what we tried to stress in the report was the fact that this blueprint was to be established at a very high level. It's to be established at the 90,000-foot level, meaning that what we were trying to do is to get an overview in a context for a long-term strategic plan for higher education in the state. What we did was to really emphasize in the report the need in the state of Florida to begin to develop and implement statewide public policy that takes into consideration the state university system of Florida, the community colleges, as well as the independent colleges and universities. We also were very clear, we believe, in the report, to begin this dialogue today. This report that we issued in January is not in any way to be taken as the culmination of a series of recommendations that should be just implemented, rather to really spark debate, and we have, I think, been able to do that at a very thoughtful level. And again, as the Chancellor intimated, if you really look at the comments on the blog, there's some very thoughtful comments in there that all of us really need to take into consideration going forward. The other thing that I really need to stress, and it gets back to some of the blog comments as well, is that the report that we crafted is very Florida-centric, if you will. The temptation very often is to take what works in another state and just plop it on an existing structure. We went out of our way to avoid that. In the report, obviously, you see references to California, and in the blog comments, you see over and over again the extraordinary respect many of us have for the vision over 60 years ago in California about creating a system that included a university system, now the 10 universities of the University of California, that included a state college system with a different set of mission and responsibilities and roles, and a robust community college system. So we have learned from other states, but again, our focus was on what is best for the state of Florida, looking out to the year 2030, which is a long time from now. We also focus heavily in the report, and there's been a lot of comment today, on the need to develop a newly, and we're stressing this in terms of an important point, a newly conceived baccalaureate degree that really focuses in on 21st century skills, that is, the capacity to communicate orally, in writing, the capacity to be able to integrate thinking across disciplines, and also to utilize a technology in integrated thinking. When you, in any state, and this was true when we did work in North Carolina, ask business leaders what they expect from their university graduates, it's all of the above that I just described. And so part of the concept here is to really challenge Florida, because we think we have an extraordinary opportunity, to really begin to design a new concept of education at the baccalaureate degree, because it is something that is really a very essential element in any strategic planning in higher education going forward. And the report also addresses the need to work closely with business leaders, but also, very importantly, the incredible demographic changes that are occurring in the state provide some very fundamental challenges to the underserved populations of the state. And when you begin to look, as the Commissioner of Education clearly knows, when you begin to look at the pipeline that provides students from our earliest years, pre-K through 12, community colleges, and into higher education, we have some extraordinary challenges that will face us in the next 30 years in terms of making sure those underserved populations are provided the opportunity with need-based aid to be successful at whatever level of education they pursue. So those are among some of the very fundamental points in that report. Among the important observations that I just want to quickly go through with you this morning is to highlight, number one, and you can see there's an agenda item later on this morning, or this afternoon, whenever the time permits, to talk about some of the demographic data in the state. Obviously, there is a demand for additional access to education here in the state, and what we have pointed out in the report is that the demand itself has not really been fully documented. So consequently, what we're recommending very, very strongly is that the Board of Governors establish a working group of experts to really get their arms around and maintain a sophisticated tenure enrollment projection model for individual institutions in statewide higher education. Secondly, what we observed is that the university system in the state has significantly increased degree production and has emphasized high-demand degrees. However, graduate and professional programs have grown at a much faster rate than the undergraduate programs, and that only dovetails back to the comment that I made earlier about the need to really begin to address additional baccalaureate offerings and institutions. And we also recommend that in that whole process, that there needs to be an emphasis, and you see this in state report and federal report after federal report, on the so-called STEM disciplines, science, technology, engineering, and math. And so we think that Florida has an opportunity to be a real leader in this going forward. Third observation, when we look at the conditions for success in putting together a master plan for statewide higher education over the long term, we really feel that there are a number of recommendations that have to be taken seriously by the Board of Governors, and that these are among the following. There really needs to be, from our point of view, an inventory of existing educational sites, branches, whatever nomenclature that's commonly used here in the state, to categorize them according to some standardized classification. There are a lot of branch campuses, sites, that are offering degrees in combination with community colleges, some standalone, and we just need to find out what those branch campuses are offering, the relationship to the overall institution that's offering those degrees. We also are recommending that the Board of Governors conduct a mission review of the individual campuses and of the board itself, of the Board of Governors itself, to really identify what the roles and mission of each should be and their interrelationship. One of the things that's very clear in our experience in higher education is this is among the, this is the newest system, if you will, of higher education in the U.S. As a result, during the course of this whole endeavor, I think there will be an opportunity to really clarify roles and responsibilities between the Board of Governors itself, the Board of Trustees, and their respective institutions. We're also urging in the report that the governor and the legislature form a blue-ribbon commission to begin to look at tuition policy and design tuition strategies, then increase institutional flexibility, but also increase major reinvestment through need-based aid, again, to begin to address this extraordinary demographic shift that's occurring and will continue to occur in Florida. We're also looking to have the governor also, and the legislature, look at the need, or actually, form a blue-ribbon commission of Florida leaders, to begin to look at redesigning bright futures and the prepaid tuition plan to ensure long-term solvency in each of those areas. And because many, many states in the country have begun to realize, and through all of the wonderful opportunities that have come through the state this year through biotechnology, is to really consider, from the Board of Governors' perspective, the development of an Office of Higher Education and Economy in the Chancellor's office, to work with state agencies responsible for economic development, to really coordinate the efforts of the individual institutions, the members of the legislature, in developing an overarching initiative in economic development. Now, what are the recommendations that really focus in now on the development of a Florida blueprint? There are three that are very, very critical. One is to establish a new system of bachelor degrees, bachelor degree offering institutions with their own governance parameters. This has created, as I indicated earlier, a lot of discussion among many of you, but what it really does call into question, and what has, I think, gotten lost in some of the communication, is giving SUS campuses that wish to opt. I'm saying opt very, very carefully. This is not something that we're encouraging the board to mandate by any means. But what we're trying to do is to create incentives for institutions, to look at the way in which they are providing baccalaureate-level education, and to really look also at the current branch campuses, and to begin to develop a formula. We just provided one for your consideration. And that formula was that if, in fact, a branch campus had reached And that formula was that if, in fact, a branch campus had reached an enrollment of 2,500 full-time equivalent students, and had the data to demonstrate the ability to reach 7,500 FTE within 10 years, that in essence, that kind of entity site could become a baccalaureate degree-grading institution on its own. Also, what we suggest, because this state has had a long history of articulation, two-plus-two, with the community colleges, and also, this state is among about 10 or 12 others where the community colleges do offer a baccalaureate degree in applied areas, that if community colleges wish to opt, and I'll stress that again, wish to opt, to join in a baccalaureate kind of setting, that in essence, some new parameters be developed. What we did was to provide some consideration, again, for discussion purposes, that if, in fact, any community college wanted to produce more than 50%, half of its credit hours at the baccalaureate level, that, and could reach 2,500 full-time equivalent in enrollment within five years, and had the ability to reach out to 7,500, that in fact, within 10 years, that they also would have the option of becoming a baccalaureate institution. Now, we also talked in that same series of recommendations about the independent sector, which is a very, very critical sector here in Florida, as it is in other states across the U.S., that if any independent college chose to become a public or quasi-public college and could meet similar FTE requirements, as I've delineated, both for the community colleges and the branch campuses, that they would opt to do so and be considered by the Board of Governors. And also, new campuses. New campuses on our list are the last articulated fundamentally because we want to optimize, maximize, whatever word one wants to use, constrain financial resources of the state of Florida. So what we're trying to do is take a look at what exists now, how best to reallocate those resources to meet the access needs the chancellor has talked about, and the growing demand for baccalaureate degrees, in a way that is holistic and makes sense. The second point that's very critical in our blueprint for consideration is that we really feel very strongly that the funding approach for the state university system needs to be changed fundamentally. And what we're saying is that instead of the drivers being growth, because here in the state of Florida, you have among the largest state universities in the country. And there's a reason for that, and that's because if the driver are resources, you're going to grow as much as you can to acquire those resources and manage them effectively. So what we're suggesting is that among the parameters to be considered is looking at retention and graduation rates, understanding that those would have to be different because of admission of each institution being different. And also that the state provide support above the base funding of programs for high-state need academic programs, such as in those STEM disciplines that I mentioned, education, others that we all can mention. We're also suggesting in that review of how, in fact, higher education is funded, public higher education is funded, is to really look at targeted areas of research and graduate study based on a state economic development plan that would be developed in cooperation with the Board of Governors. There are two other elements in this blueprint that I'd like to review for you, and that is, one, the whole issue of distance education degrees, and the recommendation inherent in the blueprint, that emphasis on internet-based courses be really encouraged through the establishment of a Board of Governors' distance education consortium. Again, what we're trying to do is maximize the resources. It's not to say that the institutions that are a part of this system do not provide distance ed, they do. But we're trying to figure out what is the best way to maximize institutional resources and have the greatest impact in terms of access to distance education. And there's some interesting models out there in Maryland in particular, in North Carolina, that we would urge you to take a look at. Obviously, with such a recommendation comes a need for resources for faculty development in distance education, and also the need to develop an institution tuition rate for e-learning. And finally, as part of the element, the fourth critical element in the blueprint, is to reach out to the independent colleges and universities in a very intentional way throughout this process, in certain initiatives that expand access. And that would mean, in the gist of our report, to include independent colleges and universities in forgivable loan programs, as an example, to include some of the independent colleges and distance education offerings as well, and also to really begin to look at how to maximize the current use of the facilities at each of the institutions, and to take a look at capital needs for those institutions ultimately as well. Bottom line is that as the Board of Governors begins to reach out at additional hearings over the next few months, and facilitates discussion among groups such as these, there are clearly going to be a tremendous amount of give and take in those discussions, and there needs to be. Some of the recommendations in the report, I think, the Board of Governors, in partnership with the Commissioner of Education, the community colleges, the independent colleges and universities, can take place very quickly. Others, as the chancellor and the chair have alluded, are going to take considerable time. But the good news is that you're all working from a very solid base, and as the chancellor very clearly pointed out a few minutes ago, the issue is, how do we take what exists now in a very fundamentally new system, maximize resources, and really begin to serve even more effectively with all the demographic changes that will be occurring? The extraordinary, extraordinary opportunity the state has to make a difference in higher education.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pappas. Before we begin our comments, I'd like to remind those of you who are going to speak today that while we value the report, and certainly will take into consideration all of Dr. Pappas's comments and recommendations, the Board of Governors has had no discussion on any of them, or acted in any way. So this is beginning of a long discussion, something that we believe is very, very important for the citizens of the state of Florida, and all of you will be part of that discussion as we move through the public hearing phase of this study. So the Board of Governors have not even had discussions on any of these recommendations. We will begin today by the most important person in this room, who has, does have authority to help fund the university system, Representative David Mealer, if you please, is he still in the room? He is a man who has been so supportive of not only the university system, but of the state of Florida, and we thank you so much, and we appreciate your support so much.
Well, Madam Chair, I cannot thank you enough for the opportunity to be here today, Governors, Chancellor, also our newest member of the Board of Governors, Governor Stavros. When I'm in Tallahassee, I walk the campus every morning, and it is inspiring to note what the power of an individual can do to enhance the learning opportunities of many students within our state university system. And I applaud what you have done there, and again, it's an absolute joy to see you here with this group. Madam Chair, I can't tell you how important this moment in time is for our state university system. And I keep the Pappas report on my desk, and I refer to it often, as the matter of fact, the commissioner knows, or anybody comes in my office. In the public policy debate right now, I don't think that there could be a more critical document to engage ourselves in the various component parts of what we need to do in this state in terms of public policy as it relates to higher education. And I think it's absolutely remarkable, in this room today, that we do have the commissioner, we have the chancellor of our community college system, we have the executive director of our 28 independent colleges, universities within the state of Florida. Because right now, the citizens of the state of Florida are absolutely dependent on what you're going to bring to the legislature in terms of a vision and a plan. And I think that one of the things that we're asking for is that in terms of implementing some of those recommendations, which I would very much like to do, particularly if you look at access and opportunity, and I think it was alluded to earlier, the thing that concerns me more than anything else is the emerging demographic in the state of Florida. And the very thing that those students are going to need to have the opportunity to access higher education, whether post-secondary education, whether it be at our community college system, our state universities, or frankly, for some of our proprietary institutions who provide a wonderful learning opportunity for our citizens where a traditional academic institution wouldn't be to their liking. But the reality is that we're going to have to do very different things to make sure that we engage those people early on. And I think it's important that we see everybody that's involved in this endeavor here in this room today, because it's critically important to the state's long-term interest. I can assure you, if you come to the legislature with a vision and a plan, we're going to be responsive. Because much like what our community college system has been able to do, they have come to us and have spoken in one voice. We get their plan. It's easy to implement. And right now, I think that this is the direction that you're taking. I applaud it. It is going to be very helpful, not just to our state university system, I think it's going to be very helpful to every citizen in the state of Florida. The economic development platform, as you know, Madam Chair, House Bill 1237, where you were here, the governor signed it on this campus this past June, I think is truly the platform to elevate some of the innovative ideas that our speaker has put in place. Those are our priorities, particularly innovative idea 15. We will take an institution to the top 10 nationally. That is not going to be easy to do, but the one thing we know, right now, with that plan, if we're willing to elevate one, will simultaneously take the entire system with them, we'll be the beneficiaries. I'm excited about the public policy debate that's going to occur related to that. I think it's going to be in the state's best long-term interest, and I think it's going to help you do your job more effectively. The economic development underpinnings absolutely have to be some of the engines that drive the direction that we want to go in higher education. I cannot thank you enough for the opportunity to be with you. I have 20 months left. The clock is ticking. I pledge to you, as I did with our commissioner, I will do everything I can to be helpful in those remaining 20 months, because with your help, I know one thing, we will leave it better than we found it. This is an important first step. I wish you every success, and I look forward to your deliberations today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, David, so much. And we pledge to you that we are going to work closely with the legislature. We believe we can be a good team and be helpful to each other. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
John Adams, that was a perfect introduction for John Adams, who's president and CEO of Enterprise Florida. And no one in this room knows the value of Enterprise Florida more than I do, because as a citizen of Marion County, we are depending on you to keep our very important E1 in the county. Is that appropriate to say? Just a little pressure. Thank you. And I know how important you are.
Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be here, and I really can't comment on that, but we're very focused on that project.
Very important to many areas.
The chancellor, and the doctor head, it's a great pleasure to be on this campus, and it's part of the vitality of the state. And Representative, thank you for that segue in teeing up economic development. I really appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be here. I have looked at the report very, very simply put, clearly and without a shadow of a doubt, the economic development, the best tool to economic development is a well-educated workforce, and it's at all levels. And obviously, given the targets that we have gone after in recent, the recent 18 months, the university and the community college systems are absolutely tremendously important to the companies that we're looking to first attract here, as well as the expansion and retention of our existing business. As you're aware, Enterprise Florida, primary mission is to diversify the economy by creating higher-paying, better, higher-quality, value-added jobs across the board. One of the first meetings I had was on this campus with the tech center. I left my office with representatives from the incubator, from UCF, with a company in our rooms, looking at a new company that would come into an incubator here, that would go out, obviously, and create jobs. It is critical. I met with the chancellor either in his first week or his first 10 days. We met at the airport here for 10 minutes and ended up in a three-hour conversation, and have routinely remained very connected with the chancellor in his office. And Madam Chair, I'd like to say it's very, very important and very a pleasure to have the input and the conversation that I've had with the chancellor, which, again, is a conduit to your board. My comments are as follows. Quite clearly, we are in a dynamic economy, and it's very glib to say we're in an international arena. There's no question. The state, a few days ago, won over $100 billion in merchandise exports globally. We are an international hub. While my father's competition was across the state he grew up in, and my competition was nationwide, the students that you have in the school today are clearly in a global arena. This arena is changing, and we are not necessarily the masters of our destiny, a few gee-whiz pieces of information. At one time, we led in higher education worldwide, and we led in enrollment. The UK is up 30%. Enrollment in China and France are up over 70% for two different reasons, hypergrowth in China, and of course, high unemployment in France. For the first time since 1890, the U.S. no longer has the highest rate of students entering post-secondary education. This is from an economic standpoint, highly concerning to me and the development of the state, given the fact that we need to have the jobs and the expertise to fill these centers. We look at the higher, connection with higher education and economic development as a leveraging. Most definitely, we have from the very start, since October when I arrived here, have really concentrated on our economic packages in dealing with communities, the legislatures, and business, to make sure that Centers for Excellence, world-class scholars programs, the technical incubators are all part and parcel of what we're doing. We had somewhat of a banner year last year. Expansion of scripts, working with the university in Tampa for SRI, Torrey Pines, Burnham in this community, and the recent closing of the deal on Martha Merck have changed the ground in this state forever as a high-tech hub going forward. Because of this, the challenges are even greater, because these companies are asking, where will we get the graduates to fill the jobs that we need to make it work? In my initial notes, I note I wrote a couple of days ago, I had unite higher education and industry, and enable universities to advance and work together with communities and industry to commercialize products. Instead of unite, which we will unite, it's more of a blending. And I think the real driver here is, there are companies out there, and we see it with the incubators, we see it with the research parks in Gainesville, we see it with efforts that we're encouraging statewide, companies are attracted to our academic institutions. We sell the academic institutions of the state. It is part and parcel of every package, it's part and parcel of every part of our endeavors to make sure that this is a united front as we go forward. Obviously, the programs are extensive, and I won't go into that. I will make a couple of comments. I think the report indicated that the, an individual in the chancellor's office, I have been connected directly with the chancellor and have made them part and parcel in meetings in our offices and statewide, to ask Mark, the chancellor, what else are we doing? I've been on most of the campus and met with most of the administrators. We want to leverage the university system, and want to work with you and whatever we can do to do that. It is an economic engine of the state. In closing, it's very, very easy to sum up. Higher education is an indispensable strategic tool for shaping, directing, and promoting the economic growth of this state. We are in a very interesting moment in time. Great population, great workforce, a great product, with the biotech attraction, which is just one, and I haven't talked about aviation, IT, gaming, the marine services industry, we are, have a tremendous point in time to be tremendously compatible going forward. We are, have a tremendous point in time to be tremendously competitive going forward, and a major part of that will be the higher education system. And in closing, Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to depart. I'd like to tell Dr. Hitt, he's got a bunch of great entrepreneurial students. I was, I was stopped on the sidewalk to vote, and they offered me donuts if I would vote. So I'm going to go downstairs and collect those donuts. And I want to get those business cards, because that's the kind of students that we want to hire, are those that are out there shaking hands, and how you doing, sir? What are you going to do? I said, well, can I vote? He said, sure. What do you want to do? I said, I want to vote, you know, often. I said, what's it going to cost? He said, I got donuts. I said, I'm there. So with that, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be here, and if I can answer any questions, be happy to, but I believe you just wanted comments today.
Thank you. I'm sure there are questions, but I'd like to invite you and the chancellor to continue your conversation, because I do think all of us recognize the importance of economic development to our state, and that the relationship between the university system and to Enterprise Florida is very valuable to all of us. Invite you and our chancellor to have conversations to maybe get to a point that there are more specific ways that we can, we can be involved and helpful to you, and in return, you can be helpful to us. So I thank you for that, and invite the chancellor to continue that conversation. Are there questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Next, I'm going to ask Dan Holzenbeck, the Vice President of Government Affairs at UCF. Welcome, Dan. He has comments, and a number of people that you are going to introduce to speak to us today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will be brief. I don't have any comments other than to introduce what we're going to do today. If I may, however, in a personal realm, I've known you for many years personally, and I admire so much your public service. I have never had a formal public occasion in front of a group to tell you that, so I do that today. Thank you for your good service.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you. You have also graciously allowed the University of Central Florida to invite some guests, since UCF is your host institution. The president has allowed me the privilege of introducing those, and all I'm going to really do is to tell you, give you their names and their titles, and if they will listen very carefully to the order of their introductions, then they will follow immediately one another in making a few remarks representing this institution and this community. Our first speaker will be Mr. Jacob Stewart, who is the President of the Orlando Regional Chamber of Commerce. Jake will be followed by Mrs. Olga Calvet, who is Vice President and CFO of Palmas Incorporated. Olga will be followed by Mr. Ray Gilli, who is the President and CEO of the Metro Orlando Economic Development Commission. Ray will be followed by Mr. Rick Walsh, who is the Chairman of the UCF Board of Trustees. And finally, and I think everybody would agree, is the best part and why we're all here, one of our students, Dr. Dan Reeny, who is President of Reeny Technologies Incorporated. He has a terrific message, which I think will sum this institution and our community into one brief statement. They've all been instructed to be briefed, Madam Chair, so with that, Jacob Stewart.
Thank you, Dan, and good morning, Madam Chairman, Mr. Chancellor, colleagues of the board. I'm honored to be here in front of you again, and I had been invited to read from prepared remarks, but the chancellor has given me an opportunity to be more spontaneous, if I may. If I may quote you, when you set up the presentation, you said, what could and should our university's system look like in 30 years? And how can we meet the changing needs of Floridians to better compete on the global stage? Is that, that's the charge? Then the consultant responded with five points that are very perfect. In other words, you said you prepared the report in not isolation, but in an academic environment, and you're now beginning to encourage the spark of debate. Florida is centric, as you said, those are your words, right, doctor? And let me just build on that. If given the choice of when I could live and where I could live, in the 18th century, it would have been Virginia, center of the universe. 19th century, it would have been New York, the 20th century, California. But in this century, my choice would be Florida. And you said that. The future, it belongs to Florida. You went on to talk about 21st century skills, and in fact, how we will engage the new population. I want to just frame out to the chancellor that this region is in a similar vision-setting exercise. But it's not 30 years out, doctor. We're asking people to think 50 years out. Seven counties, 86 cities, 3.5 million people, 4 million more en route. Every 12 months, 120,000 permanent new residents come to Central Florida. And what does that mean, then, for the university here? Growth means opportunity. Expectations rise with growth, and it creates a leadership opportunity for the university. The medical school, if I may say, here at our hometown university, and this leads right to what the chancellor said, it's not about the students, although we can't wait to welcome these medical students. Can the university transform our regional economy and allow us to better compete on the global stage? And how can we do that, Madam Chairman? We can do that through partnerships. I know of no university, I know of no business, I know of no institution in this great state that engages more thoughtfully partnership opportunities than this university. So let me just turn to another academic, Peter Calthorpe, who has written textbooks that are now in use in our 11 universities. His book is entitled, The Regional City. What will we be like in this new century? And Calthorpe says this in the opening paragraph. Most Americans today do not live in towns or even in cities in the traditional sense that we think of in those terms. Instead, today, most of us are citizens of a great region, a large and multifaceted metropolitan area encompassing hundreds of places that we would traditionally think of as distinct and separate cities. But today, Calthorpe says, they are held together by a shared vision of success so as to better compete on the global stage. Madam Chairman and Mr. Chancellor, I would argue that in the 21st century, that too is a purpose of a metropolitan university. Thank you very much for allowing me to have this time.
Any questions or comments from our members? Welcome, Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I am Olga Calvet. I am an alumna of the University of Central Florida and also a member of its Board of Trustees. I want to welcome you to the university this morning, and also thank you for all the time that you devote to the process that is your state university system. When I look at the University of Central Florida and how far it has come in a very short period of time, and how much it contributes to our community and to our state, I always look at it from two different levels. One level is emotional, as an alumna, and one is practical, as a businesswoman. As a graduate, I feel a lot of pride for what has been accomplished at UCF in a very short period of time. We have experienced unprecedented growth that has produced not just a much larger student population and growth in physical plant, but which has been accompanied at the same time by raised rising SAT scores and GPA averages in all of our incoming freshman classes. Obviously, a lot has changed at this university since I first entered years ago, pursuing a degree in accounting. In the early 1960s, thousands of Cuban exiles came to Florida seeking refuge. My family was amongst those early refugees. My parents left behind all of the worldly possessions and headed to the unknown, seeking freedom. They started their lives over as they settled in Orlando, a very different Orlando from the city it is today. Adjusting to a new life and a new country was difficult, but my family never lost faith and continued to build its future. I will never forget my father always stressing the value of education. He always told us that the only thing he had not lost of the new regime was his college education. His college diploma was the key that opened the door to the future, what he could provide for his family. As far as my parents were concerned, it was never a matter of where, of how, or when we could attend college, or if we were to attend college. It was always a matter of what we were going to study while we were in college. Five years after arriving in the Orlando area, I was already ready to enter the college. That really did not allow my parents a lot of time to set aside money for a college education. I was fortunate, though, that UCF, after you back then, had recently opened its doors to students. Had the university not been in Orlando, it would have been financially much more difficult for me to attend college. I was able to attend class and live at home, which helped to cut costs. A short time later, my brother also followed me to UCF, and since then, my oldest daughter has received her bachelor's and master's degree here at UCF, and my youngest daughter is now a junior. They attended this university out of choice. They were able to experience firsthand the energy that is present on this campus as they grew up and came to the right decision, attend UCF. Having the opportunity today to serve on the Board of Trustees at UCF and on its foundation board provides me with the opportunity to give back to this university as we continue to shape its future. What more can an alum ask for? We get to have input into our university's future. Our board continually strives to meet the needs of our students, including planning the addition of new graduate and undergraduate programs that those students are seeking. It is hard to imagine that our graduate students number in excess of 7,000, many more students than the university's chatter class, and many more students than many student bodies at universities and colleges throughout the United States today. I believe it is important to note that a good number of those graduate students are seeking degrees in disciplines that are of particular interest to our state. Approximately 1,800 are seeking graduate degrees in education, and over 1,000 are seeking degrees in engineering and computer science. Our community over the last couple of decades has experienced a lot of change, tremendous growth that has been mirrored in our student population. After all, universities do not operate in a vacuum. They interact with other institutions and organizations in their communities who are stakeholders and financial supporters. One change in our community has been the influx of Hispanics into our area, which are projected to soon make up 20 percent of our population. Once again, as it was for me years ago, UCF provides these new residents with an opportunity to access an institution of higher learning without having to leave home. Obviously, a financial concern for many. As a businesswoman, I marvel at the asset that UCF has become in our community. Research dollars, new business startups, and partnerships with the university are commonplace. More recently, our community and university worked together to bring a medical school to UCF. Once again, the university is helping to meet the needs of our residents by helping to meet another important need, medical service and access to medical degrees. Unfortunately, I know of several children of close friends who ended up having to attend medical school outside of our state. Now, new medical candidates can look forward to attending medical school at the University of Central Florida. We're already seeing the medical school pay dividends to the Orlando area, with the Burnham Institute choosing to locate our medical campus, and with the possibility of the new Nemours Children's Hospital locating there also. The businesswoman in me also sees another financial positive related to UCF. Being that we are located in a metropolitan area, we are the perfect location to prevent access to graduate education. Many students that choose to go back and earn graduate degrees already have jobs and many have families. A graduate degree, I'm sorry. Financially, it would be difficult for them to move to another area to attend school. I believe that this will be of particular interest for women. And in researching data related to our graduate students, I found that females make up 4,200 of the approximately 7,200 graduate students at UCF. Access to these graduate programs is of a great benefit to them. By attending UCF, there is no disruption in their family's lives. Additionally, a larger metropolitan area provides many more job opportunities for these students. UCF is in the right place at the right time in their lives. As a CPA, I am praying to recognize assets. UCF is definitely an asset to our community, and more importantly, to our students. It provides them with access to higher education and an opportunity to build a better future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
Good morning.
And board, and chancellor. It's truly a pleasure to be here today. When I was asked to come and speak, it was truly an honor to be asked to come.
You move your microphone up a little bit.
Up a bit? Can you hear me now?
Both of them. Your previous speaker was a...
Okay. Better? Okay.
Better. Thank you so much.
I'll speak into the microphone. Okay. Again, truly a pleasure to be here. We are a metropolitan economic development organization, representing the four counties of Orange, Osceola Lake, and Seminole County. So we're a regional economic development organization that's been in place for 30 years. We're a private-public partnership. Our board chairman now is Dr. Don Jernigan, who is President and CEO of the Adventist Healthcare System, which has 41 hospitals throughout the country. We have a very large board, a representative board, I'd like to say, but on that board are all the right people if we're going to do economic development effectively. And included on that large board is Dr. Hitt. He is very important and his team in the whole process of economic development. Economic development's really changed and evolved over the years. Not only is it focused on attraction, growth and retention of existing industries, but the creation of new, new technologies and new industries as a result of research that is done locally. And we have many examples within the region of companies that have, that were born here and that are now succeeding here. There's truly global competition for all things high-wage, high-value. If they're high-wage, high-value jobs, there's lots of competition for it. And that was echoed by some of the remarks in Jacob Stewart's comments. It's very important to have a regional university that is focused on the economy of the region where it resides, and I can't overemphasize that. It's never more important than now in our state's history because of the changing economy. What we're faced with today is a lot of challenges, especially in the realm of transportation, education, as well as providing workforce or affordable housing. And some of the solutions for, for many of these challenges is obviously a richer, more prosperous state economy. And to that end, we're focused on making sure that Metro Orlando is doing its part. Some recent examples that I'd like to just highlight very, very quickly of the importance of the partnership role of a university that's focused on the regional economy. Some recent successes that we have had in Metro Orlando that I want to share with you involve a company that most of you might know, Electronic Arts. They were looking at expanding their operations here or several other places throughout the country, including the Northeast and in California. We were successful in demonstrating to them that not only could we meet their current needs, but able to develop programs that would develop the talent, the talent that they need to be able to grow and compete in the very crowded marketplace now. So we expect from the success of EA Sports expansion here, planned expansion here, is to grow a new dynamic digital media industry that will employ thousands, with average wages of $70,000 to $80,000 a year. Most recently, and it was mentioned, and that is the Burnham Institute. I remember many, many meetings where we were in conversations with Dr. Reed and his team about the importance of a university relationship. Fortunately for us, and thank, and thank you all so much for your approving the medical school, it was quite timely, I will tell you, as we pursued the Burnham Institute. Very important for them to have a collegial environment where their scientists can talk to and work with other scientists about projects that they're working on. So to be co-located with the University of Central Florida Medical School and UF affiliate as well was critical to their location decision, and will be critical to the life science sector that we hope to develop here in Metro Orlando. Again, we expect average wages to be in the $70,000 to $80,000 a year, and we expect there to be thousands of employees, not unlike what we've had in the successful modeling, simulation, and training industry. One other company I just want to highlight, because I think it's important to cite examples... One other company I just want to highlight, because I think it's important to cite examples, is the JetBlue University, a JetBlue Training Center that located here. They did not know that we had a very strong modeling, simulation, and training program at UCF. We brought them out here to the campus. They actually had a chance to sit in one of the simulators and crash-landed a few times, and were convinced thereafter that we could provide the kind of workforce that they needed to be able to grow and locate their business here. It resulted in about $100 million, $160 million capital investment and about 160 jobs, high-wage jobs, in Metro Orlando. Apologize for my raspy voice, but I want to thank you all very much again for the opportunity to share just a couple of examples of why it's important to have a partnership with your regional university. And I would say that we're very fortunate at the EDC to have partners such as UCF, as well as the other colleges and universities in our region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Board of Governors. Ava, we missed you on our trustees here. Good to see you again. Glad to have you visit our community. My name is Rick Walsh. I am a retired shrimp and pasta salesman with Garden Restaurants recently, President of the Nob Hill Group, and the current Chair of the University of Central Florida Board of Trustees. And I'm representing today along with Olga, our other members of the Board. I'd like to introduce a few of them that are here. Dick Nunes, Phil Sklock, Manaj Chopra, Mark White, all our members of our trustees who are here today are taking in this deliberation. I also want to thank Jake and Ray and others and John for really helping set the table for us. I think that it's important for you to understand how we view ourselves in this community. All of us are part and parcel of this community, along with our role as trustees and as members of the university community. But we all very much appreciate the time and the resources that you're dedicating to plan for the future of higher education in Florida. It's critically important to our economy, as you've heard. It's critically important to our ability to attract industry and commerce, and our mission to also prepare future BOG members, political members, business, academic leaders that I think will pave, as Jake said, the new century. I have a somewhat unique perspective to share with you today. First, I was a student here in 1972. And so this is my alma mater. And second is, we have a very longstanding relationship through the company that I was part of, Garden Restaurants, with this university. And then, of course, my role as a founding trustee and today as Chair. I'm truly fortunate and have greatly benefited over the years by having what, and I stole this, by the way, an FTU education and a UCF degree. I arrived in Orlando in the late '60s at the Hospital Corman stationed at the then Naval Hospital here. FTU at that time, now UCF, was the only way I had of attending higher education post my four years in the military. And I arrived about the same time UCF was opening its doors, along with a lot of other things. This community was beginning to take off, and it presented me with opportunities that I could not have dreamed of, growing up on the plains of the Dakotas. My undergraduate degree, which I received from here, prepared me to, I think, transition to the general workforce. My graduate degree prepared me to then become part of the senior management team at General Mills Restaurants, and then ultimately to be one of the original team that took Garden Restaurants public nearly 15 years ago. While at Garden, we recruited very heavily from this university in a variety of ways, not just in hospitality, not just in restaurant, but in accounting, in legal, in all communications. There's a whole variety of folks that work with our company now that had their start from this university as well. And so this relationship remains close. We have partnered by doing a lot of things, endowing a chair here, helping build the Rosen School, the Communication School, the Business School, and with the Medical School. One other point, I like to use this periodically because he's my closest friend, so I admit my bias ahead of time, but there's a guy that I worked with at Garden named Blaine Swett. And we've been best friends for nearly 25 years. He is also a UCF graduate, a master's degree graduate, not an undergraduate. You may not know his name, but I think you know the outcome of his work. Because Blaine is the guy that led our efforts to build the Olive Garden, the Bahama Breeze, Smokey Bones, and Seasons 52. And I can't even tell you the amount of value, job opportunities, and wealth that's been created as a result of his leadership in that. And it was, he also is a graduate from here in the MBA program. So it's very difficult for me to imagine what both my career and what Garden would have looked like had this university not been part and parcel of what we did. And as a representative of the colleagues on my board, I can tell you that they understand that as well, and they are terrific individuals who donate a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of their personal resources to help guide and support the mission of this university. We have read the PAPAS report with great interest. I think I would congratulate them on a Herculean effort in such a short period of time, given as much as you had to go through, I guess so. Congratulations. And thanks to, also to Governor Dasburg and others for their personal financial commitment to commission the study. Let me just say, in the study, there's much there to be considered. And I would say, after repeat reading it, as I mentioned to John, it's much like Jacob's angel. You kind of have to struggle with it before it bestows its blessing on you. It is a starting point for our discussions, and it raises some critical points. And one of the points I think it raises that I'd like to specifically comment on is this notion of partnerships and the partnerships with community colleges in particular. The charge, as I recall in there, was that the state university system find some innovative ways to partner with our community colleges to increase the, in a planful way, the number of bachelor's degrees that are available to our citizens. And if you look at this community's arrangement and through John and his management team's efforts to work with the four community colleges in our area, what you'll find is that there is a guaranteed access to UCF for qualified students that come out of that system, and they, in turn, don't have bachelor's degrees nor are they seeking. And I think that's a template that you may want to consider also as part of your discussions. So we appreciate your efforts. We appreciate your recognition that this region can't become what we hope for without the many undergraduate, graduate, and doctoral programs that we need to have incubated right here. Jake mentioned it, but let me just say, I really believe that we are at a seminal moment in this community. It has a potential to be transformational. We've had one or two of those in our history, if you look back at the history of Central Florida. I think this is one of them. And if we do it well, we're all going to look back and say, we were there, we were part of that, we made a very positive difference in people's lives. And I think that, look what happened to those people and what this region became. We believe our metropolitan university is the crown jewel in our economic engine in Central Florida, and it opens up the possibilities beyond everything that you think of, beyond hospitality and technology incubation, the intellectual marketplace, the gateways for the Americas. There's a whole list of things this university represents in the life of this community. And we are hard at work. Where I grew up on the plains, we had a saying, "If you wanted milk, you best not sit in the field and hope that a cow backed up to you." We are not sitting here waiting for a cow to back up to us. This university is a vibrant, growing one. It is integrated with this community and partnering with this community and the other community colleges and higher education institutions in this region. And I can tell you that we are committed to serving high-quality teaching, research, and service throughout this university. My colleagues on the Board, I think the administration, the faculty, and the student leadership of our campus, along with the business community, political and community leadership of our region, are all committed to building our state university and serving as a major intellectual and creative resource, developing innovative public and private partnerships, and participating fully in the economic vitality of Florida. We appreciate all you're doing to support our efforts, and we look forward to working with you to build a world-class higher education institution for Florida. So thank you for your time and welcome to Central Florida.
Governor Edwards.
Rick, would you, just for a brief comment?
The one time I forgot to ask if there were any comments. I'd like to apologize to the Board.
Your comments are very informative and very helpful. The PAPAS report includes a number of suggestions and recommendations that are somewhat controversial in many areas. Do you or your Board have any specific comments as to any of those recommendations, other than the comment about the community college, which was certainly an excellent act of comment?
I think the Board, and we're actually having some additional workshops on this to be talking about, because we're going through the planning of our own future as well, as we look and how can we help the efforts of this Board. So I will have, I think, on representing the Board, have some additional ones for you in the future. One I would suggest is, I think, making sure that we're working with the right numbers, making sure that we're working from the right foundation. I think there were some suggestions about us in there in terms of what our future might hold, but the numbers don't point us in that direction, nor do our efforts in this community point us to that direction. So I think we need to make sure that we're all using the same facts and that we all agree on the same numbers that go into coming up the formula at the other end. So I think you'll see some of those comments from us, and we stand ready to help you. We think it's a great first effort, and we appreciate what you're doing to do it. But I will have some additional ones later on, but thank you.
Questions from any of the other Board members? Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Dan Reenie, and I'm the founder and president of Reenie Technologies and a UCF graduate. I'm coming forward today to lend support for the recommendation of the PAPAS report that states that graduate programs such as, research universities such as UCF should be aligned with the region's economic development plan. As we all know, Central Florida has a keen focus on the technology sector, and in my experience, UCF's graduate programs, in conjunction with the Tech Transfer Office and the Technology Incubator, are key drivers stimulating this emerging technology sector. In every technology hub throughout our country, there is always a top research university nearby. In its seven-year history, the SF Technology Incubator and the Tech Transfer Office have established an impressive track record of feeding intellectual property and advanced-degree workers into the Central Florida workforce. I started at UCF on an athletic scholarship, but during my tenure period there, received a bachelor's, master's, and PhD in mechanical engineering. During my graduate studies, I not only learned about the science of engineering, but the business of engineering. So with help from the Technology Incubator and key faculty members in engineering, I formulated a plan to create a company to continue the work I had started as a PhD student and to build applications around it. Within one month of graduating in May of 2000, my company, Reenie Technologies, had a $100,000 contract from the Missile Defense Agency, and within six months, a follow-on contract for $1 million to demonstrate to them how our technology could be used for laser weapon systems. During this time, Reenie Technologies continued to partner with the university as a subcontractor on our DOG programs, and as a member of the Technology Incubator, my company found success. In the past six years, RTI has brought to Central Florida $10 million in federal contracts, started 20 high-tech jobs, two-thirds of which require a master's or PhD to fulfill, and subcontracted $1.2 million back to the university in support of our contracts. Looking back over the past six years, it is clear that RTI's success is due in no small part to the programs already in place at UCF. The core education of undergraduate program, in conjunction with the higher learning and research breakthroughs of the graduate program, that are now linked with entrepreneurial chip initiatives and the incubator program, are all key factors in growing the high-tech workforce needed for Central Florida. My story is only one student, starting one company. There are many other success stories at UCF that enhance our community, since there are so many ways that the results of the graduate program trickle down into our workforce. RTI and many other companies like mine could not exist in Central Florida, would not exist in Central Florida, if it was not for the graduate programs in place at our university. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude the speakers for the University of Central Florida. And at this time, I want to thank the Board of Trustees, the University of Central Florida. Many of you are here today, but you've worked so hard to give your time and dedication of time and resources to make this university even greater, so thank you for that. We have three more invited guests, and then we will start, and then we'll have comments from the members of the public. First, we will have Nancy Bradley, who is an invited guest, then David Chancellor Armstrong, and then Ed Moore.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Governors, Chancellor. It's nice to see you again, by the way.
Did I say your, Nancy and I have worked together before, but for the record, did I say that you, did I give your title? Would you like to do that?
I can go ahead and introduce myself.
Okay, please.
Yes, I'm Nancy Bradley. I'm President of Central Florida College and Career Training Institute here in Orlando, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission for Independent Education, appointed by Governor Bush in 2006. On behalf of the Florida Association of Post-Secondary Schools and Colleges, I'm here today representing the 768 career schools and colleges and our 235,000-plus students. We thank the Board of Governors Strategic Planning and Academic Programs Committee for inviting us to participate in today's public input session. I will be providing the career schools and colleges' views and comments relating to the PAPAS Consulting Group's report, and also commenting on how we, as a sector, can work together to provide greater student access and academic programs that directly respond to our state's workforce needs. Although universities and community colleges are a large part of our state's higher education system, they are not the only part. Before I discuss the PAPAS report, I would like to give a quick overview of Florida's career school and college sector. For over 100 years, we have provided a critical source of industry-based education that upgrades and refines work skills for Florida's frontline workers. Our students look to us to teach them relevant and needed skills necessary to adapt and succeed in Florida's ever-changing marketplace. As of 2006, there are 768 licensed career schools and colleges operating in Florida. We educate over 235,000 students throughout the state. Without the services we provide through our schools and colleges, it would cost the state over $1 billion per year to educate these students. During the 2005-2006 academic year, we graduated over 80,000 students. Our schools offer programs which provide student certificates, two-year Associate of Arts and Associate of Science degrees, baccalaureate, masters, and doctorate degrees. All career schools and colleges are licensed through and overseen by the Commission for Independent Education, a seven-member gubernatorial-appointed board which serves as the state regulatory agency. We have a strict oversight process set forth by Section 1005 Florida statutes and Chapter 6E Florida Administrative Code. And if our colleges or schools do not adhere to state standards, then they lose their license. The Commission assesses the quality of institutions by ensuring that standards are met and encourages these institutions to be responsible to the demands of the economy. The schools' accrediting agencies, federal government, and state agency, the CIE, all have investigative authority of our sector to protect students. Complaints are thoroughly investigated and mitigated, and accountability is required in order to maintain licensure. All nationally and regionally accredited career schools and colleges must meet federal accrediting standards set forth by the United States Department of Education. Our average student age is 24, and their main objective is to upgrade their skills or secure a better job. Some of our schools in Central Florida include Full Sail, Central Florida College, Kaiser University, DeVry University, Florida Metropolitan University, and University of Phoenix. We are grateful to the Board of Governors for soliciting a study conducted by the PAPAS Consulting Group that assesses and makes recommendations on how to improve our state's higher education system. The PAPAS report findings are bold. While we mostly agree with many of the issues raised in the report, such as improving school access, increasing bachelor's degree programs, encouraging academic programs that respond to state's needs, and including independent colleges and universities in certain initiatives, we took exception to why our state's higher education leaders did not include the resources offered by our 768 schools which accommodate over 235,000 students who want to improve and enhance their employability. The PAPAS report neglected to mention career schools and colleges' educational value and contributions to Florida's growing workforce. Since I raised the question, let's explore how our sector can work with you in developing a coherent strategy and roadmap to accomplish our state's higher education goals. First, the PAPAS report emphasized the need for greater student access. We have some recommendations we would like to share about how to increase student access We have some recommendations we would like to share about how to increase student access without tapping into taxpayer funds. Number one, increase capacity by joint use of facilities. Yes, distance and online learning works for some students; however, many students need that human contact and one-on-one dialogue with their professors and other students. We agree that expanding online learning is one way to increase student access, but it is not the only way. The state university system and community colleges are limited by their facilities. It is costly to expand and build new buildings at taxpayers' expense. Career schools and colleges offer to start a dialogue about how the state can use our facilities to reach more students. This way, non-traditional students who want to attend UCF or Florida State but work full-time and cannot afford to relocate can reach out and attend some of their freshman and sophomore classes at our schools. It will save the taxpayers money while increasing student access. Number two, exploring how we can fairly transfer credits and increase portability of financial aid between all higher education institutions, including career schools and colleges. Today's student population has an increased share of older and more experienced individuals. Many of them started at one school, went to work for a few years, and are now seeking additional skills and a degree. We need to make sure that we are not establishing artificial barriers, such as denying them portability and credit transfers based on arbitrary or simply monetary grounds, as we attempt to provide greater access. Higher education needs to provide an open door of opportunity for all students, not just a confined crawl space that only benefits a few. Second, the Pappas Report spoke to the need of encouraging academic programs that respond to the state needs. This is a topic for which career schools and colleges are well-suited. An important difference between career schools and colleges and the state-run institutions is that we seek excellence through a healthy and vibrant entrepreneurial spirit, the spirit that our students are engaged, that our schools are engaged in the necessary cutting-edge training that provides the best quality as measured by the marketplace, our students. If our schools fail in this mission, then the students go elsewhere. We recommend that when developing a roadmap for our state's higher education system, it is important that we address the reality of today's marketplace. Florida's employers are looking for well-trained and educated individuals who can jump in immediately, remain flexible as the demands of the job and economy change around them. That is why we want to encourage you, that you look at all resources. Don't leave a major artery off your roadmap. The roadmap is a way to accomplish these goals, and our sector should be represented as a participant in the mapping process. As we all move forward in this dialogue, career schools and colleges recommend the needs of the students be placed first. Emphasize a workforce and career curriculum that measures quality, accountability, student achievement, and student outcomes. Finally, increase student access by removing barriers for non-traditional students. This includes student-centered, not institutional-centered, financial aid, giving those eligible state financial aid students the choice in deciding which school or college best meets their career objectives. Financial aid should follow the student, not the school. Enact and enforce credit transfer policies that give students the ability to continue their education without suffering additional financial penalties and losing precious time retaking the same classes they studied at another accredited school. It is in the state's economic interest to prepare, graduate, and place students into jobs sooner rather than later. Every Floridian who wants to obtain a higher education should have the opportunity, whether it be at a career school or college, community college, or university. We all recognize every student is unique, and not every student fits into the college or university mold. It is in everyone's best interest to ensure our higher education system provides the best educational value and is accessible to every student, and allow those students to be able to attend the institution that best fits their needs. I want to underscore our sincere commitment to being a resource for the state's higher education system and the Board of Governors, and we look forward to working together and developing a coherent strategy to accomplish our goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll stay there a minute, and there may be some questions, but all of you haven't had, all of our members haven't had the opportunity to work with you as many times as I have.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, are all your members of your Florida Association of Post-Secondary Schools and Colleges for-profit corporations?
Not everyone, no. No, ma'am. There's a mix.
Most of them are, would you say?
I would say the majority are. And also, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt you. The Florida Association of Post-Secondary Schools and Colleges is the association, and of course, they are, not every licensed institution is a member of the Florida Association. So just to, just to make that clear.
Because it is a blurred line, and we've discussed this before. Do your students in the for-profit schools receive bright future scholarships?
Yes, yes, they do.
Do they receive other state funding?
They, it depends on the institution. Degree-seeking students may receive the FSAG, I think it's called. I'm not quite sure of the exact name, but, yeah, the Student Assistance Grant, they can receive that. And of course, many of our institutions are participants in workforce initiatives, so through the Enterprise Florida and Workforce Central Florida, for example, is one of the resources that many of our institutions work with.
Who is your, who accredited your school?
At my schools, we are accredited, now this is personally speaking, we are accredited by the Accrediting Council of Independent Colleges and Schools, which is ACICS, and also the Accrediting Commission of Career Schools and Colleges of Technology, ACCSCT, and we also hold programmatic accreditation through KHEP for our medical programs. And then, of course, as you well know, there's many, many other accrediting commissions, represented Saks, HLC, and many others.
Certainly. Are there questions, comments, Governor Parker?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you can comment on this, but I'm interested in, you know, since there's a surge of community colleges offering four-year degrees, and I'm interested in your thoughts about that and how that surge impacts your system, or if it, you know, if it has no impact on it at all, I guess I'm interested in your thoughts on it.
Well, I, personally, based on all the research that's been done and all the comments that have already been made, been made relevant to growth and economic development, I think our population can certainly support all types of resources. So we're very supportive of the community colleges in whatever they do. We like to work as partners. We don't, we want, we want to work with you, not against you, I guess. So we're supportive of that as well as, you know, all the other sectors of higher ed.
Certainly. And this may be the same, I just may have zoned out. So is ICUF exactly, are you guys?
We're not ICUF.
Okay.
They're for-profit.
We, we're the career college sector.
Governor Parker, Senator Ed.
We may have this information available to us already, but if not...
We can hear you.
We may have this information available, or maybe it's generally accessible, but I'd like to see a, over some historical period, that the nature of the degrees or certifications that your institutions are granting, because I don't have a sense of whether we're talking about an extremely isolated role relevant to the ESUS or one that's predominant. So that would be helpful for me to understand the content.
We can provide that.
We can provide that through the Commission for Independent Education. We'd be happy to.
Thank you. Governor Ed.
Does your entire group get many graduates from the community college system?
We do see a fair number of leavers, I think, as their term, whether they're graduates or people, say, that have tried another form. Many of the students that attend our schools may have started off as a traditional higher ed student in any of the universities or community colleges, and maybe it just, it just wasn't right for that person, too big, too confusing, who knows? We see a lot of non-traditional students, second career people, single moms, very similar to what the community college sees as their day-to-day student. And of course, we also see the younger students coming right out of high school. So it's a mix.
Do you, do you support, and does it exist in your system, the common course numbering?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it implemented? Is it in place now?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Throughout your...
There are, yes. The statewide course numbering system is open to the institutions licensed by the CIE, and a number of institutions participate in that system.
Could you, when you give us that report, include that, the numbers that participate in it?
Yes, yes, we sure will.
And also, your graduation rates, do you publish that?
Yes, yes, we have all that. We do, lots of reporting.
Could you provide that, and also the, your retention rate?
Sure.
I've had the opportunity to work with Nancy before, so I am more, more involved in this conversation, and I'm sure she'll get that information to us.
We'll be happy. In fact, Sam Ferguson, our executive director of the commission, is here today, so I'm sure he's taking lots of notes on what we need to do.
One more question. And you may have said this earlier, but how many, how many institutions are a part of your organization?
Well, there's a total of 768 licensed institutions within the state.
How many of those are from out of state that have come in here?
Oh, I don't really have that number. Sam, I know it right off the top of his head. About 100, I guess.
Wait, can we go back there? Over 700 in Florida?
In Florida, yes. And we, there's, and we'll be happy to provide all that information so you can get a better sense and feel of who and what.
And we're trying to learn, and you, we've had the opportunity to serve on other committees together, but it's a lot of information we need to know.
Sure, and, you know, we'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information that the committee board may ask us for.
Thank you so much, and we'll look forward to receiving that information.
All right. Thank you for having us.
Chancellor David Armstrong. Chancellor, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board of Governors members, Ms. Pappas, Chancellor Rosenberg, others. I appreciate the opportunity to come and have an open dialogue with you on what I think is a very important report, commissioner also, a very important report to stimulate a high-level dialogue on the future of higher education and post-secondary education in this state. I want to applaud your consultants as well. Ms. Pappas and her team spent a great deal of time with me personally, and my staff, and members of our colleges, presidents, council, and we appreciate you being open and listening to us and examining a great deal of data and reports, master plans and strategic plans, and joint plans that we've had between Board of Governors and the State Board of Education and others. And Chancellor Rosenberg has already visited with our Council of Presidents this past month and had a good overview and a stimulating, open conversation as well, so we appreciate very much, I mean this very sincerely, the open dialogue. Clearly, with the governance structure that we have, Madam Chairman, in this state now with two governing boards, or at least coordinating boards, over two different systems of education at the post-secondary level, we are going to have to work together in order to plan for the future. Our universities have an extraordinary role in the professional level, the graduate level, the research level, and of course, the primary role in the bachelor's degree production level as public institutions in this state, along with many of our fine private institutions. Community colleges also play an important role in that. And I have been using a metaphor that I'd like to use with you of, slightly modified one, Mark, from the one you've heard recently. I'm now using the metaphor of a four-sided pyramid that community colleges play in supporting bachelor's degrees in this state. One of them's been getting a whole lot of attention, but I don't want to forget about the first three that are far more important, frankly, than the one that is getting so much attention and that the report mentions, along with all the other sides as well. First, let me say that our colleges and working with the State Board of Education have, in the last year, completed the new strategic plan that focuses on access, same thing you're concerned about, but in our case, it's access perhaps to some different things. In addition to the bachelor's degrees, we have this comprehensive mission that also focuses on everything from adult education with people who do not have even a high school diploma yet, leading to a GED, to career and technical education programs that don't even require an associate's degree but are growing in number in allied health fields or hospitals and doctors and information technology positions that are open and providing great careers. Our colleges are a huge opportunity to get the American dream through one- or two-year career and technical education programs. Those other areas that are not bachelor's degrees in route to a bachelor's degree compose about 50% of our students and our budgets at our colleges. We do not want to lose that part of our mission in anything we do in the future focused on the bachelor's degrees. It is imperative to the economy of this state that we continue to have that part of our mission, and the Pappas Report does a very fine job of noting that that is a critical part of the community college mission. And so we want to make sure we continue that. In addition to that, however, we do play a significant role in bachelor's degree production, starting with the first and foremost, most important role for students who live in the 28 communities around the state that we have colleges, to have that first access to the first two years of a bachelor's degree, to move toward an associate's degree that they can then transfer to one of our outstanding public universities or one of our private universities. That model is still, folks, unsurpassed anywhere in this nation. I beg of you to talk to your colleagues in other states. I do, they still cannot believe, Chair Roberts, when I tell my colleagues in many other states that our students are able to actually transfer into our universities, and faculty members don't fight with them over the quality of the education that they had at a community college. They get credit for that. That is a tribute to great people like Stan Marshall and many others in the past, public policymakers who have worked to make this two-plus-two system, the foundations of which rest on all of the many policy issues that you know about. Somewhere around 50% of the students in the upper division of your great universities started at a community college, and they're doing great because you're doing a good job with them, but also because they had a great foundation and started at a wonderful community college. It's affordable for them, it provides access at the local level. That's side number one of the four-sided pyramid that we've got to make sure we continue to support, and it's going to take all of us to do that. Number two, it's been mentioned before, and the report does this, we need to continue to encourage and incent your universities, our universities, and private universities to partner with community colleges in meaningful ways. We have doubled the number of programs in the last five years that your universities and private ICUF universities are offering on our campuses at 28 community colleges now. The student enrollments are somewhere over 20,000. That's a good-sized university in and of itself. There's no reason that can't be expanded even more with incentives programmatically. Representative Mealer earlier talked about this. He pushed and encouraged for some incentives to your universities and our colleges to do more of this. I applaud the UCF agreement. I was here to celebrate that when that was signed between our institutions. We need to encourage more of that, and the best way to do that was with financial incentives. We can do that with facilities as well. We've done a lot of great joint-use facilities, UCF and many other universities, and we need to encourage that as well. So that's another route to the bachelor's degree. That's side two of the pyramid. The third route, and I appreciate the report's focus on the use of technology and distance learning, we all need to do more in that area. We have had a consortium in our colleges for many years, that, 10 years now, actually, where our colleges partner. I'd encourage you to take a look at our website, distancelearn.org. You will see cataloged more than 14,000 courses now, including complete degrees that can be earned online, and a wide variety of everything from career and technical education to associate's degrees. We need to do more of that. Enrollments have been growing rapidly. In five years, the course enrollments in our college distance-learning courses have grown from 125,000 to more than 300,000 enrollments, and almost tripling the number of enrollments in those programs. So, fourth, the third side, we can do more in technology and distance learning, and I know your universities are doing great things together. We could probably do a lot if we pooled our resources strategically. The fourth side that gets a lot of debate and a lot of discussion, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it, with you about it, as long as you would like, is this targeted, focused, community colleges' bachelor's degrees. There are now eight institutions, as of just last week with the State Board of Education's meeting, eight institutions that have been approved for specific, targeted, limited, high-demand, critical-need areas. high-demand, critical need areas, namely, teacher education, nursing, and applied degrees in many areas like public safety, where our law enforcement communities leaders are wanting to have their workers' grade, uh, skills upgraded and their, their education upgraded. Uh, Madam Chair, I applaud you for working with former chairman of the State Board of Education Phil Handy and helping us narrow the focus and trying to clarify what the focus of these degrees are. These are, without a doubt, very serious shortages in many of these areas. Not only can community colleges do this, they have been doing it for some time now with a great deal of success, the legislature has shown tremendous support behind this, as has, have the previous Governor Bush and the current governor. We expect that there will be more of our colleges who will help in this area as well, but I want to make clear to you that as long as I'm in this position, and I hope as long as the State Board of Education continues to govern these things, that this is a secondary part of the mission of community colleges. It's an important one and growing in importance, and it can be more important in helping us address the shortage or need for more bachelor's degrees, especially in these targeted areas. But, we must make sure that we don't turn these institutions into something that would destroy the other parts of their important mission that I mentioned earlier. And I'll tell you that one of the things that I have some concerns about in the report, and frankly do not agree if I'm understanding the recommendation, is the notion of potentially turning community colleges into a state college. State college, to me, folks, means a number of things, and the report, um, points some of these out, but a state college is not a community college. State colleges that I know of in California and many other states do not have the comprehensive mission that I mentioned earlier. They also have, um, well, recommended in this report, state colleges would, uh, report to you as a governing board, and with all due respect to you, I think the world of all of you individually, but community colleges are wonderful partially because they have local governing boards who respond to local needs. The 28 colleges in this state have local governing boards coordinated by the state on a variety of different issues, including budget and other things similar to what you do, but their local governing boards make sure that they are responsive to the needs of the community, and I, I would, would beg of you to visit the wide variety of the institutions that we have, from Chipola College in Marianna that offers a very different program mix and serves a very different type of student population than Miami Dade, one of the largest institutions in this nation, regardless of the kind of institution. And so, um, I don't think these things are either-or propositions, I think that with community colleges, with the four approaches that we can help you address the bachelor's degree needs in this state, that we can do some things to, um, to, to meet the needs in the workforce of this, of this state, especially in the areas of teacher education, nursing, and some of the applied areas, without the need to go to a different type of governance structure that would mean potentially damaging some of the very fine things that make our great community college system as good as they are. With that said, uh, there are many other things in this report, Madam Chair, that are outstanding, the recommendations for joint planning, uh, you recall the, the previous task force we had, and we debated ad nauseam, what is the real need for bachelor's degrees in this state, and we really didn't come to a conclusion. We had very good arguments from numbers from everything from 48,000, I think it was, at the low end, looking at traditional students over the next five or 10 years, all the way up to 135,000 if you take a more liberal and expansive look at adult education and others. I, we, we desperately need to work together to try to focus in what are those numbers and what are the real needs. We also need to work very closely with our ICUF, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of them, but as the previous speaker, uh, noted, there are a lot of other institutions who are offering degrees and access to education in this state. They are choice opportunities that we need to pay attention to and figure out what their role is and utilize them in every way. Uh, I will stop with that, Madam Chair, with, uh, but finally, thank you again for bringing this very important public policy conversation to the table. Chancellor Rosenberg and I have stood side by side and already in front of several legislative committees, and, uh, will continue to do so with your support, uh, have a very civil and open public policy debate about the future, which is very important.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. David and I have, we've been on a number of task force, and it is a, a very interesting conversation. Vice Chairman McDavid, then Governor Ed.
Um, you be, you began, um, Chancellor, with, with the, um, comment that given the nature of our governance system today with two boards, uh, governing higher education, that it was very important that we coordinate and work together. You know, I, I guess, I don't want to, uh, unfortunately, I suffer from being direct, so if I offend you, I don't mean to. I'm curious, though, as to how we have coordinated in the, um, recommendations of, of, uh, deciding which of these schools and what bachelor's degrees and so on are, um, going to be approved, and how that has been taken into account in a broader sense, in terms of planning and where the population is and whether or not there are alternatives already in place and all of that ring and roll.
Uh, well, we've done it according to the requirements of the law, first of all, and we have, in every case, invited your staff and, um, the presidents of public and private institutions to bring forward alternative proposals. We have, uh, required the institutions to put together comprehensive, and I'd love to share with you, some comprehensive proposals that have data that shows the need and demand in all of the areas where, um, these bachelor's degree proposals have been, uh, proposed to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education then reviews each one of them individually, uh, each degree area individually after a rigorous review. There's an external consultant now that is hired to review them from Southern Association of Colleges and Schools' requirements. After they are approved by the Southern, after they are approved by the State Board of Education, they then have to go through the same review process that universities do, by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, to look at their resources, et cetera, before they will be granted accreditation status.
Um, okay, um, I, is there no formal, there is no formal, if I understood what you said, there is no formal process then that coordinates, uh, what universities are offering to meet those needs in those areas versus?
Well, that would, as I understand it, universities are under your governance structure, and so, uh, the State Board of Education does not govern universities.
I understand, sir, I'm trying to figure out if there is a formal process for you to cooperate or coordinate or receive information from the chancellor's office and, and how that works, and I guess I'm concluding no?
Uh, no, ma'am, as I explained, we send letters to your staff and to all of our university presidents, public and private, and seek input, and welcome anyone to come and speak to the State Board of Education as well as submit proposals in response. And, again, I'd be happy to, Madam Chair, if you'd like, come back and go through the whole process that is used and perhaps share some of the specific proposals if you'd like to do that.
The process has been, I might comment, rather public, we've had a lot of public debate on this issue, and, and I would say, I think, uh, all of us might agree that we could improve it, and we all, I, I think we're all dedicated to doing that, because the one thing we do agree on is access is important. And, uh, of course, my original offer was not accepted, was that the universities would fire that access, but we're moving into a new, uh, area, and we hope that we can work closely together. Governor Ed.
David, you'd commented among other things, and I thought your comments, by the way, overall were excellent, I might not agree with them, but at least you specifically addressed some issues. Uh, you, you were talking about, uh, co-op, cooperation between the systems as it relates to programming and facilities.
Yes, sir.
Specific example, Edison Community College just received two new bachelor's degree degrees, Florida Gulf Coast is partnering with them, offering some of the courses for them, and they're sharing facilities.
Right.
My, my question to you, with the shortage of, that we have, uh, with so many, uh, facilities as well as dollars, what can we as a board do to facilitate the cooperation between our systems as it relates to these programs and as it relates to facilities, which you have a lot of that we could use?
Yes, well, you have been doing that, and your most recent budget request, Mark and I got together and decided that we would collectively recommend to our two different boards similar incentive funding programs to encourage more programmatic kinds of, uh, approaches, and that, I think, will go a long way if we can convince the legislature to do more in that area. We had a pilot with that this past year. Uh, secondly, uh, let's figure out ways to encourage and incent even more robust partnerships like what we see here with UCF and the institutions in this area, and there are more of those, Florida Gulf Coast and Edison and, and every university, I am sure we could find some notable specific partnership programs, and if we filter those out, identify them and provide some financial incentives to, to both parties, uh, that always works. The area of facilities, you've done a very good job in the past, as well as we have, to encourage joint-use partnership programs. Commissioner Blumberg is sitting here, she could give you chapter and verse of the many debates that we've had in the Department of Education with previous commissioners for many years on trying to target more of those dollars because we can get more efficiency and bang for our buck. And our private universities can come in and use those facilities too, so, uh, I would suggest that we continue to focus on those areas that we know work already, if we make them a priority and focus resources there, it'll make a big difference.
There are many, um, examples of success, at the community college in Ocala, we have a university system, and there are a number of ICUF institutions and public that, I mean, provide courses and degrees and graduate degrees, it's just working beautifully there. Governor Parker?
I have a question, um, generally, which would probably be of no surprise, just based upon our, uh, I guess my position on the Board of Governors, I have some reservations, you know, about the community colleges and their decision to offer the four-year degrees, and, um, you know, one of them really dealt with quality, or, or that's one of my primary concerns, and you've kind of addressed that with the system that you've put in place. My, my secondary concern, though, is that I've always bought into the concept of the special, um, niche student that the community college was, um, was there to assist. And my question to you is, can you tell me whether anything has been put in place that's going to encourage our community colleges that have now decided to offer four-year degrees to incentivize them to continue to offer those two-year programs that provide such a, a vital, uh, fulfill such a vital need within the state?
Yes, Ms. Parker, thank you for the question, that is critically important to the comments I was making about making sure that that primary mission does not get damaged. Um, we've done several things, when we wrote the law, we said clearly that these are still community colleges, meaning they have open-door policies, they still do remediation, which is, uh, frankly, a relief of, I think, from a significant burden to our universities, with our community colleges focused on that population who is not prepared to take college credit courses sadly. Um, we make sure that in reviewing their budgets and their, um, cost analysis that they send to us each, us each year, that they are not cannibalizing, my turn, I think appropriate one, not cannibalizing those parts of their current primary mission to supplement something that is secondary in nature. So, we are very focused on it, it is, um, I, I don't know how to speak more clearly and strongly on the issue that if we do anything structurally or financially that would cause these commu, outstanding community colleges, arguably the best in the nation, to lose those primary critically important parts of their mission, because we've got this other thing going on out here that is frankly, folks, St. Petersburg College has been doing this five or six years. They have more experience in it than anybody else, only 6% of their enrollments are in these programs. It is a secondary minor part of what they are doing, but we've got to make sure still, just as with universities, professional programs, research, graduate programs often start getting the focus and the status, and you have to make sure that bachelor's degrees don't get slighted in that. We've got to make sure the same thing doesn't occur at our community colleges. So I appreciate the question, we will continue to be diligent on that.
One more question.
Um, I'm sorry.
Good job.
Is it, um, has it become a status thing among the community colleges that, you know, um, that is that, if, if you are not now offering a, a four-year degree, that you are now kind of, um, um, less important, or, you know, that, that you are, you know, kind of like not in with the in-crow because you haven't advanced to that level?
Right. You know, I'm not going to go to the mind-reading of people involved in this, I know all these presidents, I know 235 trustees who are appointed by the governor who serve on the boards of these things, I know that their primary interest is serving the needs of their community, and they see needs that come to them from students and from hospitals and from superintendents of education, et cetera, and I think that is first and foremost. The issue of status is always a part of what goes on in higher education. I could ask you probably, um, with all due respect, the same thing, about is it now an issue of status to have to have a medical school or a law school? It is not unlike that question for community colleges. We can all pre, probably reach our own conclusions about that, um, but I, I believe just as with your universities who are seeking to offer outstanding medical schools and law schools and others, that there is a core intention there that is focused on the needs of students and on the needs of our state.
Chancellor.
Madam Chair, there you go.
Yes, sir.
A comment, it's true, isn't it, David, that some, uh, community colleges have elected not to move toward baccalaureate programs?
Absolutely.
And I don't sense any discrimination against those in terms of status or prestige.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And Madam Chair, uh, if I may, a question, uh, excuse me, about accreditation. David, I probably should know the answer to this question, but I don't. Of those community colleges that have been offering baccalaureate programs, have some of those gone through the SACS process and met their standards?
Yes, sir, in fact, President Marshall, we do not allow them to begin to offer the programs until they have received the substantive change from the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. So all of the ones that have received approval in the past, that've gone through the review process and have been given the Level Two accreditation status, which means they have to have more PhD faculty members, et cetera, library holdings and all the things that they look at. Um, the only one that has not gone through that review process is Indian River Community College, it was just approved this past week, they will do that over the next six months, and, uh, in all cases, our institutions have received approval.
One more question, uh, please. Yes, sir, how many of the community colleges have changed their names to college?
Originally, there were, mm, Madam Chair, I'm going to be careful about this, there are three or four, I know St. Petersburg, Miami Dade, uh, Chipola, and, and Ocalus-Walt. And here's the issue behind that, uh, this is an unfortunate thing, because, and our board, with my recommendation, has now suggested that they do not. However, sadly, they were told by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools when we first started doing this, that because they would be changing their level status, that they're now considered to be four-year state colleges and that they are no longer a community college, and you need to change your name. We disagreed with that vehemently, we sent letters, got on the phone, and fortunately, there was a change in the leadership of the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, we got that clarified, they now agree with us, as does the new Carnegie classifications of higher, of, of post-secondary and higher education institutions, that there are such things as community colleges that offer a limited number of bachelor's degrees, and the State Board of Education has sent the message to everyone since then, I think since, Madam Chair, you were on the State Board of Education, uh, when we were going through this, that we believe community is an important part of their names.
And that Daytona College is now back to Daytona Community College?
Right, we, we, you recall, I think you were still on the board at that time, they came forward with that, and that's where that conversation first took place, and we went to the Southern Association then and, and argued that point and, and won.
Well, I do know that the, your board and our board are all dedicated to doing the right things for the citizens of the state, and it's an outstanding board, and the commissioner, the chancellor, so this isn't, this is, if it was, if it were easy, we wouldn't be having these public hearings, so we're just all going to try to do the right things and work together. Commissioner, would you like to comment? Just drop right in.
I just want to, um, reiterate what, um, David has said in terms of the primary for the, the board, that the primary goal is, is access, and, and clearly, that's, uh, what we're, we're focused upon now, and, uh, we want to, again, move beyond, though, and have, uh, a good, uh, dialogue and, and cooperation as, as we move, move forward.
Thank you, I certainly concur, and I do want to say, I, I think one of the most precious things in this state is articulation agreement, and we all need to work to protect that, and, and I think it becomes a concern if things get too complicated, because I am dedicated to protecting that, it's very important. So thank you very much. We have one more invited guest. We have one more invited guest, and we will break for lunch, and we will have then our, the public input. Ed Morris, Executive Director of the Independent Colleges and Universities of Florida, our ICUF colleges. Thank you, and welcome.
Madam Chair and members, I really do appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today. I stand here probably as an example of a changing demographic in higher education in Florida. I'm a product of the two-plus-two system in Florida. I'm a proud graduate of what was then Broward Community College. Two years there, got an associate's degree, transferred to Florida State University, and sitting here realizing that I have had the pleasure of knowing Dr. Marshall for 35 years now this year. It's been quite a long time since I first met him and have been able to engage him in numerous conversations. I am also, at 55 years of age, if I can convince my committee anytime soon, going to receive a PhD here in Florida from our public system, again, from Florida State University. So I'm not uncommon, and as I will show you, somewhat in our system. For three and a half years now, I've been representing the independent colleges and universities of Florida. And I guess I'll make a public announcement. They have changed my title recently, and we're doing some restructuring, so now I'm the president of the independent colleges, proudly representing them, and had the pleasure of spending some time with Dr. Pappas. And the quote there at the beginning, I think, is important, that we are at the beginning of a meaningful dialogue here. It's hopefully going to be a long and engaged dialogue, because as we've heard from presentations earlier, the issues are complex, and they're just not going to be that easily resolved. Report presents a very thoughtful and very thought-provoking assessment of Florida's higher education system. Certainly, to compete and prosper economically, Florida must dramatically boost its higher ed system and performance and national standing. We have these to hand out to you as well. Several of the ICUF schools, a number of them are pioneers here in Florida. They've been in existence for over 100 years. They, those and others, even the newer ones, are represented here by me as being fully willing to collaborate with you on each and all of the endeavors that were presented in the Pappas report. Our system is about Wisely, and I think in reading through it, I grew in admiration for Dr. Pappas and her staff, and that they were smart enough to lay out a lot of the problems here in Florida by choosing not to detail how to get there. I think that's probably the most critical thing here, is identifying resources, opportunities, possibilities, without a prescription from the start of thinking, this is where we want to be when we finish. I think until such time as we really understand what's available out there, it would be premature to begin making decisions. But we offer a few reactions to the recommendations. The Board of Governors should establish a working group of experts on growth projections. We're fully in favor of doing this, and we commit ourselves to working with you. A concern I would raise here in Florida, I've served on a board like this in Illinois for a number of years, a state that had fairly stable populations and not great demographic changes. Florida's very different. Developing a 10-year growth projection for Florida, if you jump back three or four years ago, you might think that was easy. Consistently this year, when I see in the newspaper, Duval County just the other day, 1,900 students disappeared from first semester to second semester in their K-12 system. Scores of thousands of students have disappeared, beginning this past fall with the October count. And even Palm Beach announced the other day, I think they lost a couple of thousand students just over the Christmas break. There are things going on here in Florida that this group, as suggested here, should spend a great deal of time trying to get their arms around, finding out what is really going on in the population. Because certainly, our K-12 systems, as we lose, if we are in fact losing population, if this is a trend rather than an aberration, is going to have a tremendous impact on what our space needs and our access needs are in this state. A brief summation of who it is that ICUF is. We are 28 institutions all across the state of Florida. Last year, we gave 16,000 bachelor's degrees. That's pretty common over the past several years. It was about 27% this past year of the state total. A third of the total degrees granted in Florida County, all degrees are granted by ICUF institutions, by our 28 institutions. We are 44, of our Florida resident population, we're 44% minority enrollment. And last year, 41% of the degrees given by our system to Florida residents went to minorities. We have more than 16,000 students in education majors, and I'd like to point out on that, that just a little over 5,000 of them are at the baccalaureate level, with a preponderance of them, a little over 11,000 at the graduate level. That's important because it's, in a state that desperately needs teachers, when we are educating 11,000 of them at higher education levels, it's an indicator that at least amongst most of those 11,000, those are people that are committed to being teachers. They're likely to stay in the system. They're improving their skills and their capacities, and that's a very important part of what we do. 4,200 engineering and about 3,500 computer science majors. The last bullet point there, one in three students in our system receive federal Pell Grants. When you talk about demographics and you talk about access, I mean, I was touched by one of the earlier presenters, the lady from the University of Central Florida, talking about the opportunity that this institution provided to her many years ago. We mined the IPEDS data basically to get a picture of who we were. I needed to know in presenting to the legislature, really, and to you, who it is that ICUF serves. While we have some of the highest-ranked institutions and programs in the country, we have expensive tuition at some of our institutions. When we blend our student body, we developed a chart of IPEDS data and blended our student body with the state university system and with the community college system, to see what, who had the largest percentages of their student body that qualified for Pell, who had the largest percentages of their student body that had family incomes under $60,000. The results were very interesting. 18 out of the top 20 institutions, percentages of student body receiving Pell Grants are ICUF institutions when comparing us to the state university system. When we blended the community college system with that, nine out of the top 15 were still ICUF schools. Clearly, we are serving increasingly a demographic that should be of grave concern to this body and the effort as we move forward. The Pappas report pointed out the need to meet those underserved populations. We are doing it and proudly doing it. We break out our system quickly for you. We have four research universities, 10 masters, nine baccalaureate colleges, two medical schools, five law schools, six engineering programs, 12 nursing programs, and 21 teacher ed programs. What I suggest to you in looking at that list, and we commit to working with Chancellor Rosenberg and any group that's put together on this, is as you develop plans or potential for addressing the critical needs of the state, nursing, education, engineering, that you look at all of the assets available to you, all the assets available to Florida. And that includes what you do and your 11 state universities, and it includes our 28 colleges and universities as well. If there's a critical need, for example, for math and science education teachers here in Florida, I would suggest that one option to explore would be a partnership. Pappas report suggested, I'll talk about it in a minute, suggested perhaps some of our institutions would want to go public or quasi-public, and I would add kind of a third option to that, that what be explored is the contracting for specific needs. If you took Nova Southeastern, University of Miami, Florida Institute of Technology, all high-end, highly competent, quality math and science institutions, and talked to them, all three of them have schools of education, how could the state link to what is available at those three institutions in producing math and science teachers for the state of Florida? Perhaps by contracting with them, they would have space available in their schools of education. We could produce high-quality teachers, maybe using forgivable loans, maybe using, you know, there's all kinds of mechanisms to accomplish that, produce math and science teachers for the future, linking them into our K-12 system, and committing them to serve the people of Florida. Here's a map, kind of a complex map, lots of different shapes and forms on there, but it gives you a pretty good indication of who we are. We have over 180 sites now, 42 and growing, as Chancellor Armstrong mentioned. We are on numerous community college campuses across the state, as well as our significant number of online degree programs. Now over 120,000 total students, and our system is growing, continues to grow, and is growing faster really now than the state university system. For the state, it's a debatable number, but if we ran some calculations in our office, and if you had to replace our system and wanted an all-public system, it would cost about $3 billion in capital expenses and about $2 billion a year in operating expenses. Not something that's really a wise investment of money, and there are much cheaper ways. Here's another recommendation from the Pappas report. This touches on whether or not any of the ICUF schools would be willing or interested in becoming public institutions. And just on its face, without talking about the merits of it, none of the ICUF bachelor degree colleges could meet the eligible requirements outlined in the report that would fit into that niche. They were unlikely to reach the 7,500 students in the next 10 years, would have to amass a large capital expansion to do so. Those that would fall into that qualifying group, they wouldn't, say Bethune-Cookman College is an example, would have about 2,500 undergraduates, has a master's program now, multiple master's programs. But if you use them as an example, they would not be inclined to flip into being a public institution in the first place. But if they were, to reach that 7,500 level, they'd have to triple the size of their undergraduate enrollment, not likely to happen, and it would be a very expensive way to do it. Here again is where I would mention that academic contract model used rather to expand bachelor's degree production, particularly in the underserved regions. Collaborations, we're all about collaborations. And again, I say we will work with you as we go forward even closer than we have in the past. Consensus recommendations that boosts bachelor's degree production in Florida at branch campuses, community college campuses, joint use facilities, and satellite sites is a critical way to reach the non-standard population, the non-traditional population here in Florida. One example I'll throw out is St. Leo. St. Leo's main campus really has only about 1,300 students, but in total enrollment, they're about 13,000. The 13,000 is a combination of online degree programs, satellite sites, and community college concurrent use sites. Very creative application, bringing college and university opportunities to students who wouldn't typically access a traditional four-year institution. The average age of the population at St. Leo of those non-traditional students is 37. It's a different lens to use in examining what the needs of the state truly are. Here's a list today, it's as good as today, of concurrent use community college sites. By next fall, those numbers probably will grow. I think right now, I was told by one of our presidents, they opened two more that would expand that number up to 44. These are, there you go, those are concurrent use sites that are offering baccalaureate degree extension programs right on community college sites here in Florida. Here's a laundry list, and I won't go through them all, because I know lunchtime is approaching, and it's always great to be the last speaker just before lunch. There are a number of ways to be creative with this, using RFP process, altering student financial assistance, targeting undergraduate degree production, linking the production availability, the capacity of our system with your system, and meeting these critical needs. Here again is distance education. This is a critical recommendation of the Pappas report. We fully agree. There's no more promising opportunity to expand access and production to expand online education here in Florida. We have major online programs. MD Riddle has 13,000 online students. FIT offers a menu of undergraduate and graduate programs. Florida Hospital College, Jacksonville University, Nova Southeastern, all have online baccalaureate and master degrees. And as I mentioned, St. Leo has an extremely strong online program. St. Leo is our third-largest institution, largely because of its online arts and science degree program. Including us in capital development is a different, that's kind of something that would take a lot of conversation, I think. Some states are ready, and New York State, for example, is funding capital construction costs on private university campuses. I would say in this state, with the long list I know of the capital improvement projects that are unfunded, and have not yet been funded in our 11 state universities, the legislature would not be likely to embrace building facilities on our campuses. And our campuses have done, I must say, if you've been to any of them, if you've been to Broward, for example, lately, and also Nova Southeastern University, using private money, using bonded indebtedness, have been able to build some really quality facilities at no cost to the taxpayers of the state. There are other ways to do it. However, another alternative, if you think back to those 42 community college site programs I mentioned, another alternative would be to look at what Texas has done at Montgomery Harris District, what Illinois did at the University Center of Lake County. I think Michigan has one in Macomb. Actually, the state building facilities in a local state partnership that would allow for greater expansion of the university center concept, where you would have more institutions. I was part of the founding group of the University Center of Lake County in Illinois and can speak to that, right now has 17 public and private institutions offering baccalaureate and master degree extension programs on a community college site in northeastern Illinois. It is a way to build upon what we already do, what already exists in increased capacity in Florida. In Tallahassee, at Tallahassee Community College, four of my institutions offer baccalaureate degree extension programs in a very small town relatively, that has two major public universities. We have four of our schools now offering programs at TCC, and they would grow and expand, but President Law does not have room to allocate to them to expand these programs. Flagler College has a tremendous teacher education program right there in Tallahassee. They have 400 students that, they're at capacity. They can't get any more room. Again, it's another option, a creative option for considering how to expand opportunity, building upon our great 28 community colleges all around this state, and our 28 institutions, and your 11 institutions and their regional campuses, creating partnerships to create opportunity. I mean, it's a long list here of our schools that have been around for a very long time, and I commend the state. I think in the last 26 years or so, the access has been created through the FRAG, through Florida Resident Access Grant, through RIT Futures, through PSAC money. They're essential contributors to Florida degree production. Our numbers are growing. When I first started in this position, I went before the legislature and warned them that a declining FRAG would lead to declining Florida resident enrollment in our institutions. And in fact, the very next year, that's what happened. The legislature responded and has since added funding into FRAG, and we are now at 3,000 per student level. Next year, it's projected that over 34,000 Florida students will be receiving that grant, and it's limited to full-time only Florida resident students. But it's boosting, and we're forecasting for next fall, we were, after they started increasing it, we went to a two-year, 2% enrollment growth, a 4% enrollment growth this year. Next year, we're forecasting about a 6% enrollment growth of that cadre of students. It's an example of what partnering at a low cost to the state with the ICUF system, offering many of those students receiving these three grants that I list here are on those community college site continuation programs. It's an embedded partnership and a collaboration amongst three very fine systems in this state, creating access and opportunity. I'll just conclude by saying that there's a lot of data out there, and there's a lot of ways we can look at this. We produce annually, and I commend you to review it online on our site. We have our own accountability report that's very thick, that gives a lot of detail. It is on who we serve, how well they do, how they graduate. Some do better than others, and there are reasons for that. I would caution, there's a lot of discussion laid. I've seen a number of newspaper headlines of increased or renewed focus on graduation rates and using that as some measure of production. I would say that the way it's used, I think, is faulty. When you have, when you don't, if you have a two-plus-two system, as Chancellor Armstrong spoke to, that's strong and vibrant, and yet the institution that that student tr- And yet, the institution that that student transfers to gets no credit for them. Actually, if you did head counts, it would cost them. It kind of runs counter. If we're going to start putting too much reliance on a focus on pure graduation rates, I think we miss the boat. What we should look at is retention, time to degree for those students that we do retain, and find ways to give credit for students or institutions on a graduation rate for students that transfer from one institution to another. So those students are tracked throughout the system. I'll close by just saying, thank you again. Thank you for allowing me to make this brief presentation. I offer all of our, not just me and not just our staff, but all of our 28 institutions are ready and willing to work with you to build a brighter Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Not a question, but a comment. Those of us who have been associated in any way with the independent colleges and universities, and I contest it, having been one of those, served for 10 or 12 years on the Board of Trustees of Bethune-Cookman College and chaired that board for almost four years, I think there are enormous opportunities for collaborative efforts to the benefit of everybody, education in Florida. President Moore has identified several of those. But I guess I'm only making the point that as we, the Board of Governors, address the Pappas Report and our overall responsibility to serve higher education in Florida, we really need to consider soon and seriously some of the opportunities that exist in coordination and cooperation with ICUF.
I totally agree with you. I think it's something that, as we move through this process, we'll identify specific areas with your help and with your presidents. The presidents of ICUF institutions are all willing to work with us and help us through this process, because I've heard from many of them. But I agree with you, Chancellor. Governor Edwards?
Just a quick comment to show you how things have changed. I believe it was 1989. I know Carolyn was new to the Board of Regents. We held a meeting between representatives of the state university system, of the community colleges, and of ICUF. And it was the first time that those three entities had ever met. And we were criticized for it.
Exactly right.
Times have changed. And I think the important thing, and I try at least every other meeting to remind all of us that we're all in this for one reason, our students and our children.
Absolutely. Governor Pappas?
I have a question. Could you describe the nature of the relationships that exist? You mentioned, I think that you were many of the numbers wrong. It looks like approximately 50 relationships with the independent colleges and universities on community college campuses. Can you describe, is that predominantly one model? Or are they serving very different purposes in different locations?
Well, essentially, it's a 2+2 type program. They offer baccalaureate extension programs on the community college campus, generally for students that have received their associate's degree at that community college and are comfortable, perhaps for numerous reasons, that they can't take... Based on the age, I'm going to say, I use the St. Leo example. They're 37, they're working, they have families, they have children. They're not going to just say, hey, let's move up to Tallahassee and go to FSU. They can stay right on the campus they're familiar with. Those are all SACS-accredited programs and get a baccalaureate degree right in their community from an established institution.
And also, crack me in and help me with this, that the ICUF institutions provide a great, are very valuable in our state for keeping teachers there. They have certain requirements to...
Yeah, certification issues, yeah.
Yes, certification. And they teach those sometimes, not even on the community college campuses because of space. They're in the high schools, they come into the communities. They provide a great service in that. People, maybe teachers who are working in the summer at other jobs, and they bring it to them. So they're very valuable, our institutions, to our citizens of our state. Is there a question? Do you have another question? Was there... Someone had their hand up over here? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We will continue this conversation. We're going to break for lunch now. Immediately following lunch, we'll invite Mr. Seabron Dixon and then followed by Mr. Charles Wright to address the board. Thank you very much. We will reconvene at 1:15. Yeah.